Good evening. My name is Melissa Musliner, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters in the Plymouth Wayzata area. And I am your moderator this evening for the Mound City Council. I would like to welcome our candidates and our viewers on behalf of our host, the League of Women Voters Wayzata Plymouth area. The League of Women Voters, a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring forums such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues important to you. This evening's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for Mound City Council. There is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Each candidate will be allowed a two-minute opening statement. A 15-second warning signal will be given before the total time has elapsed. A question-and-answer period will be held following the opening statements. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated by the moderator. Questions will be answered by the candidates in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. Following the question-and-answer period, the candidates will each have two minutes for closing statements. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. The forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. Recordings of this forum may not be used without the express written approval of the League. The League will only allow audio and video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety, except by the media reporting on the event. The candidates for Mound City Council are Drew Heel, Jason Holt, Paula M. Larson, Nicole Spees, and Deborah Vertnick. All candidates were invited to participate in the forum this evening. Paula M. Larson was invited and declined. Jason Holt was invited by email, phone, and a certified letter. Mr. Holt did not respond. As stated in our candidate participation policy, we will proceed with all other candidates. We will begin with Drew Heel to give introductory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for providing the opportunity for the city of Mound residents to hear directly from the various candidates tonight in an unvarnished venue. For those of you who have not met me, my name is Drew Heel. My family moved and lived in Minnesota for almost 20 years. Prior to moving to Minnesota, I spent eight years in the Navy as a pilot, including a tour in the Persian Gulf. During this time, I lived in several states, both on the east and west coast. As far as education goes, my undergraduate education was California University in Los Angeles, with my graduate MBA degree in Binghamton University in New York. I have also completed a six-month company-sponsored executive development program via the Wharton Business School. I have held various leadership positions within the program management arena, ranging from project manager to the director level, managing programs and projects ranging in scope from $100,000 to $240 million. Several years ago, my wife and I were looking for an area to move to as our children had completed their education and moved out of the home. We looked at several communities, but decided to purchase a home in Mound for several reasons. These were due to the small-town feel, proximity to several large cities, and the strong school system. Even though my children don't go to the school system, it still affects property value, so I am something that's important to me. And of course, we can't forget the lake. As a member of the Mound community, I became involved in the planning commission immediately and have been a member for the last couple of years. This experience has allowed myself to establish working relationships with the current city council, mayor, city staff, and provide myself an understanding of how the city of Mound functions. I look forward to tonight's questions and answers, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nicole Spees, please.
Hi, I'm Nicole Spees, and I'm running for Mound City Council to improve our community and work on advancing our aging infrastructure. Mound is over 100 years old, and the improvements that the city is currently doing are only going to get more expensive. So I want to get creative and raise our tax base with ideas that will benefit our town. I've attended many council meetings and have had a chance to speak with my fellow residents about issues concerning our small Lake Town. Well, about me, I've been a Mound resident for about 10 years, and I live with the love of my life. I'm originally from Ohio, where I graduated from the University of Toledo. For the past five years, I've worked for a few cities getting my ICE technician as well as other big equipment certifications. I worked long hours learning and understanding how city facilities work. Every day, I get to see the puzzle pieces develop from paper to the people it takes to make a city run. My coworkers and I implement council's ideas, and I hear directly from the residents how it affects them, both good and bad. Learning a city's issues and achievements gave me the knowledge to see all sides of fair representation. All of this combined work experience is what drove me to run for a seat on Mound City Council. I want to get my hands dirty and dust off Mound's image while keeping our small-town values and improving Mound for our residents, both current and future. My research covers infrastructure, green space, and water issues, and I will work with my fellow council members to make the right decisions for Mound. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deb Vertnick, please.
Good evening. My name is Deb Vertnick, and I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. I think it's really important for the voters to have an opportunity to get to know the people that are running to represent them. I am a longtime resident of Mound. We moved here in 1993. And before that, my family moved up here from Chicago when I was three years old, and I grew up on the other side of Lake near Graves Bay. So I'm a Lake girl from pretty much birth. I decided to run for the Mound City Council mainly because I think we need to get the politics out of politics. My job, I was a travel agent for 24 years, and that ended after 9/11, kind of did a number on the travel industry. And so since then, I was the bookkeeper and office manager at the Old Lock Theater. I did that for seven years. And now I work on the lake as a bartender and first mate for Wayzata Bay Charters in the summertime, and I am an activities driver for Mound Public Schools for the high school and middle school kids. I take them to and from their activities. So I am kind of a working-class person here in Mound, and like a lot of the voters are. And like I said, I kind of want to get the politics out of politics and get down to just being the... Oh, 15 seconds, okay. Get the politics out of politics and just talk to each other and be able to solve problems in a rational and respectful manner. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I will start the questions, and you'll be answering in a rotating order. I will tell you who's next and then who's on deck, so you'll have a sense of when it's your turn. All other questions will be one minute, but this first one is a pretty big question, so you'll each have a minute and a half to answer it. And I'm going to start with Nicole Spees. And that question is, what do you think are the top three issues facing our city in particular? How do you plan to address these?
Well, our infrastructure, for one. We really can't let things go to failure before they need replacing, and the costs are rising for our aging infrastructure. We did, I'm sorry, not "we," but the city did a capital improvements plan back in 2018. And it's basically a to-do list. And so I think we need to revisit that and kind of see if number five on the list is still should be number five, or if it should be moved to two, or maybe kind of pushed down to number nine. We should see about that. The green space in the Harbor District, I don't think that that has been set in stone yet, from what I have heard. So I would like to be a part of the group that cleans that up. I think that would be very interesting. And also, how do we attract business with a population of 10,000 people in under five square miles? Those are the parameters that we're working with. And I would like to sit on a diverse economic development committee with different backgrounds and experiences and ideas to kind of push Mound forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate to answer will be Deb Vertnick, please.
Top three issues in Mound, I think, right now. Number one is water. The cost of water in Mound, for some reason, is exorbitant. I don't know why it costs so much for us here in Mound when neighboring communities pay so much less. So that is a question that I have along with most of, I'm sure, the other residents in Mound. And I would like to get to the bottom of that and see if there's something that can be done about it. Number two, small businesses. I think that we need to encourage small businesses and allow them to open and help them and support them once they do decide to open here in Mound. We have a few, but we need more. And I think that the city has a responsibility to support people that would like to open small, family-run businesses. I love Mound. That is one of the reasons that I'm running, too, is because I love the smallness of Mound, the quaintness of Mound, and I would like to keep it that way. And number three, again, is the Harbor District. People I have been talking to, there are a lot of questions about the building proposal that's going on for the Harbor District. And again, I think that I definitely have more questions than answers.
Thank you. And now Drew Heel, please.
There we go. Sorry about that. I apologize. The three major items I see for the city of Mound are, the first place is Commerce Place Development. That is one of our lynchpin locations that we currently have in Mound. As one of the members of the planning commission, I was one of the two original votes who voted against this before there was a groundswell of input to really stop that development. So a common-sense development of the Commerce Place, I think is probably one of my top priorities. And how would I go about doing that is get community input, listen to community input, and build a coalition and sell philosophically the idea of a multi-use development is what I would do. Water, I pay the high-water bills like everybody else does around here. There is some history there behind the water on how it was developed. My thought on that was, if you have to pay for Y with a tax or a levy, and that with X, and then the Y has been, is finished, in other words, the sewer systems have been developed and the water system has been developed, you eliminate that tax. There's no reason to have tax X to pay for Y if Y has already been paid for. I think the city council has made a little bit of an error there, and they should kind of reduce the taxes from there. And we talked a little bit about the infrastructure. I think my time is up.
Thank you. And now the following questions will all have a one-minute answer period. And we will start with the next question. Recently, the city council denied the rezoning request for a 102-unit apartment complex at Commerce and Shoreline, the heart of downtown. What is your vision for the revitalization of that important part of downtown Mound? And first, we will hear from Nicole Spees, followed by Drew Heel.
Well, I was part of the people that went to the council meeting and said, "No, we shouldn't do this." And as I look back on it, I just would like to revisit it because I think a building with many units in there would be perfect. I'd also like to see a bridge go across to the parking garage because that puppy's never full. And I think if we had a lot of units, not so much a lot of high-end units, and I think the biggest argument that I had was there were several one-bedroom and a studio-bedroom apartment when you needed more two units. But if you could get bigger-sized units for more people in there, I think it would be great, and then have shops and stuff. I didn't like the architecture. I think it just needs to go back to the drawing board. But I actually liked that idea, and then put a bridge across to the parking garage. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Drew Heel, please.
Thank you. So as I stated earlier, I was one of the original voters against the development. And one of the reasons were is when the initial development came up, we looked at the study, and one of the studies talked about a traffic study that had been done. And after looking at the traffic study, the developer told us there would be less traffic once this is built at certain particular times. I don't need a degree in urban planning to know that just doesn't feel right. So we looked deeper into this, and it just wasn't the right mix for us. I'm not against support building out the Commerce Place development, but I think it should be really multi-use development. There should be residential buildings on the top and nice artistic areas in the bottom, which I think would really benefit the society, benefit the city of Mound. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Deb Vertnick.
Well, I am new to all of this. So again, I probably have more questions than I have answers, and actually, I think that's a good thing. I think we need input from the residents on what needs to be done in that area. It's not up to me or anybody else to be the Lone Ranger on what should be done there. I have said before that I do support family-run small businesses. I think anybody who wants to open one in that area should be able to do that and that the city should be behind them and help them to do that. And as far as residential goes, I have heard from people that they don't want more residential. Now, I've only heard from a handful of people. Maybe other people want that. I think it should be more of a discussion to have more input from the residents of Mound.
Thank you. Our next question. Some residents believe that there isn't enough business in Mound, and others believe there aren't enough people to support the current businesses. What is your position on this issue? And what would you do as a council member to work to achieve the appropriate balance? And now we will hear from Deb Vertnick first, followed by Nicole Spees.
Well, that kind of goes to what we were just talking about. To talk to the residents of Mound, make the process of them getting their views across to us more friendly and accessible, and let them tell us what they want for their town. That's kind of where I'm coming from here. I am one person in a city of about 10,000. And for me personally, I do want a balance of that. I don't want a ton of people living in Mound. Now, if 9,999 other people do want a ton of people moving into Mound, then that's what I'm going to be voting for because I would be a representative of what the people want. So that's what you do. You talk, you have discussion, you find a balance, and you vote on it. And you vote in favor of what the most people want.
Thank you. And Nicole Spees, please.
Well, we have 10,000 people in five miles with no farmland to develop, but we do have some buildings that could use a little zhuzh-ing up. So I think that we get the, it's exactly what Deb said. I think we get a lot of people together, and we put some ideas together and find out what the residents want. I personally like the small-town feel that Mound has, and you know, the fact that there's only a couple different times that traffic is bad, but it's not 394 getting on 494. It's 6:30 in the morning bad. So I would want to talk to the residents, put it out there, do some social media things. Again, get the Economic Development Committee on board, or start one, and see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Heel.
Thank you. I think one of the most important things you do to attract business is provide a strong tax base for businesses. You have to have a lower tax base to draw businesses in, and then you have to provide businesses and people coming in to visit kind of go hand-in-hand. If you have a solid business, people will come and participate in your business. I think Mound really has really a golden opportunity here to build off its businesses. I agree with Nicole a little bit. There are some areas that perhaps are a little sprucying up, and we could use a little bit of those spaces. But I do think that the strong tax base, and Mound needs to have a signature item that draws people to it. They have to have some, I don't want to be another Wayzata. I don't want to be another Minnetonka. I want to have something unique that people come to Mound and say, "Okay, this is why we're coming to Mound." So that would how I would do something like that.
Thank you. Our next question. What actions, if any, should the city government take to address any current or future racial or gender equity issues? And we'll be starting with Drew Heel, followed by Deb Vertnick.
Thank you. I'm a firm believer in working with people, listening to people, but having an educational structure that the city employees go through, some type of training program that the city employees can go through, where we have diversity training. Diversity is a lot of trigger words about diversity, but I think what it comes down to is treating people with respect and dignity, treating everybody the same, but also having some training amongst the city. I know there's some training that we do at work for diversity. There's outreach programs you can do for diversity. I think we can look at within our city employees, do we have the right mix of diversity to support what we have in Mound? I think those are the programs that I would look at as perhaps, you know, looking towards more of a diverse area.
Thank you. And now Deb Vertnick, please.
Okay. That is a hot-button issue for me personally. So I'm going to try to keep it toned down, I guess. The racial inequality, just in general, is terrible. And I will come out and say that I condemn white supremacy. I will come out and say that. I think it's, we need to understand that we are all people. We need to treat each other with respect. We need to understand that not everyone is treated the same, even though we would like to believe that they are. And I think that the local government can put together some kind of, we can actually start in the schools with respect education. We start young so that they grow up being respectful to everyone, people of color and everyone. And I will...
Thank you. And Nicole Spees.
Well, I agree with Drew. Diversity training is wonderful, and it's interesting, and it opens a lot of people's eyes. Having conversations and walking a mile in somebody else's shoes also does a lot of that. The great thing that we have about Mound is we are economically diverse. We've got houses on the lake that cost a billion dollars, and we've got the apartment dwellers, pretty much like myself, that I think are kind of misunderstood and misrepresented. Everybody talks about property tax, but I mean, we're adding to the collection of 10,000 or more people as well. I also understand it because I'm a woman working in a man's world in facilities. It's kind of wacky when you have to train a guy to how to run a bulldozer or an end loader. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now we will move on to the next question. What role should the city play in protecting its employees and the community during the pandemic? And are there other actions that still need to be taken? And we will start off with Nicole Spees and then go to Drew Heel.
Well, as I said already, we do all sorts. I don't know how Mound's city employees are protected. I know in Plymouth, where I work, I mean, it's masks all the time. If, you know, you have to socially distance, we've taken our meetings. Instead of being all in a lunchroom together, we're all spread out in the facilities department, or the facilities garage, I should say. So just to kind of social distance and wear your mask. And it's a giant pain in the butt, but you have to do it. And it's not going to get any better. And allegedly, the scientific experts are telling us we're not going to be out of the ballpark here until fall of next year. So I think we all just got to kind of calm down a little bit and take it a little bit better. And I feel for all the parents out there that are teaching their kids at home. You guys, there's a special place in heaven waiting for you guys. So just be careful.
Thank you. And now Drew Heel.
Thank you. First and foremost, we need to follow what the state mandates are. The state has been very clear on social distancing, the wearing of the mask, and what the federal CDC has implemented. My wife is in the medical profession, so I hear a lot about this at home. But if we follow those items, wear a mask, social distancing, use common sense. We can't legalize common sense, but use common sense. You know, just be safe on what you're doing. Think about what you're going to do before you go out. Wash your hands. I mean, common-sense stuff. But if we follow those guidelines, wear your mask when you need to, not only protect you, but it's also to protect your family members and people in the general public when you go out to the stores, when you go to Julie, or wherever you go. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deb Vertnick.
This goes back to my getting the politics out of politics. I think that the mask mandate has become political, and it shouldn't be. This is a health issue. And it seems that some people feel like if they have to wear a mask, that is treading on their personal freedoms. I think the city needs to take a stand on that, and this is not a political issue. This is a health issue. And we need to care about one another and care if... The bad thing about this pandemic is, one of the worst things, is that people don't know if they have it. Some people are asymptomatic, and they're passing it on. That's a huge problem with this. So we do need to wear our masks, and we should be doing that out of the goodness of our hearts to protect our fellow citizens, and they should be doing the same for us. I drive a school bus, and doggone it, those kids, I'm telling you, they don't have a problem wearing their masks. Sometimes they forget to put them on, but if, when we remind them, they're happy to wear their masks. And we need to social distance, and we need to follow the science on this.
Thank you. Our next question. The city of Mound continues to grow. This growth impacts infrastructure, schools, and traffic. If you are elected, how will you... If you are elected, how will you balance growth with the importance of keeping Mound a great place to live and protect green space? And here we will start with Deb Vertnick and then followed by Nicole Spees.
Well, I think I said earlier that I, I love Mound because it's a small town. I'm okay with some growth, but I don't want to live if I, in Eden Prairie, if I wanted to live there, that's where I would be. I think the people who move out here, move out here because it is a small town. And that's, that's why they're here. They do not want to see this booming 10,000, this town of 10,000 people boom into 20,000 or 30,000 in the next five years. So that's where I'm coming from. Now, maybe I'll have to move to Eden Prairie or Watertown or someplace if, if the rest of the citizens decide that they want to turn this into a, an Eden Prairie or Plymouth. But I prefer to do what I can to keep it small, provided that's what the rest of the residents feel as well. And I think they do, otherwise they wouldn't be here.
Thank you. Nicole Spees.
I'll be interested to see how big it plans on getting, meaning the population of Mound, because there's only so many places that you can go. It's not like we have a ton of farmland that we can sell off. That being said, a lot of chain restaurants don't think that we're viable because we're drive around country. You can drive around us to get anywhere. And so I've done some research into this. And so I would be curious to see if that would maybe force us to have more dining options from a local standpoint. I would love to have Mound identities be all small business and all farm to table, not farm, all farm to table. But I mean, yeah, I, I think some more restaurants would be great. I'm a foodie though, so that's just me. Thank you.
So the research I've done has shown that about 97% of the variable, variable area in Mound has already been built. We don't have a lot of area to build. So what you're seeing here is a lot of, we call it scrape and build. People buying old homes, tearing them down, building new homes, which increases the tax base. That has to be managed very carefully. Because what you're going to have is you're going to have a lot of very expensive houses and houses perhaps that are at the median range. That type of development needs to be really, really managed very carefully. We don't have a lot of area, but I think you'll see the social movement here is more green space. So what we have to do is balance the development of new homes, new residential, new commercial buildings against the green space that we currently have available. Because I love green space. And as everybody stated here, we want to keep this as a small town and have a signature anchor here as part of the small town. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question. What sources of funding would you seek to improve Mound's trail and park infrastructure? Please be specific. And here we will start with Drew Heel, followed by Deb Vertnick.
The first place I would look, obviously, since the Dakota Trail encompasses several cities, we are allowed to go back to the state and look for, I call these beauty bonds or bonds where the state provides the backing for the bond. We are fortunate in the city of Mound that our bond rating is almost equivalent to what the state is. So, but the state will provide a deeper pocket. So if it crosses different areas or different cities, we can go back to the state for funding. We go back to the Hennepin County Commissioners, who I, I happen to know. We could ask for funding from them. And I really don't want to raise property taxes as much as against. I think property tax is already high. Our water bill is too high. Our sewer bill is too high. So I, I really want to stay away from any type of property increases or property tax increase. So I would go towards the state and even the federal, look for grants at the federal level. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Vertnick.
Well, sources of funding. This is not something that I am very familiar with and I admit it. So this is where I would have more questions than answers. I suppose a possibility would be to go to Three Rivers Park District. I, you know, that, I think that's Hennepin County. And, you know, there's always fundraisers of, maybe we could have a fundraiser for, for green spaces for the people that want it. Something like that. This would be something, as far as I'm concerned, that I'm, I'm not very educated in and I admit that. And so I cannot be specific and I'm not going to make stuff up here. So I would just say it would, discussion would be necessary for me and listen to all kinds of ideas and take it from there.
Thank you. Nicole's piece.
I would like to take some of the big city ideas and bring them here. Not so much in the population sector, but we could start with grants. Federal grants and state grants are a great way to do that. Everyone's always talking about improving the trail. That's the county. There's really not much we can do as city residents. We see this in Plymouth all the time too. It's like, oh, can you go take care of that? No, that's Three Rivers or that's, you know, Hennepin County. So, but I don't know why we couldn't do a crowdsourced. And let's do naming rights. Seriously, we can have some different parks have some different names. I mean, I understand history, but it could also be brought to you by, just a suggestion.
Thank you. And our next question. Do you believe that the city has a responsibility toward the environment? Explain, and if so, provide specific steps you would like to see the city take. And here we will start with Nicole Spees, followed by Drew Heel.
Yes, we do. Climate change is real and I'm sorry to burst your bubble if you don't believe that. Our recycling program, I think, is on the docket for the next council meeting to, I, I think we are doing some contract with Hennepin County. I didn't look into it, but our recycling program, I think, is continuing, which is wonderful. What a certain wonderful toy manufacturer did in the 50s and the 40s to Long or Lost Lake is kind of a crime because that's just going to cost us a bunch more money to clean that area up as well as the green space. So yeah, I think environmental issues are very important and I'm glad we're taking it seriously and I'm glad we live in the time that we do, that we're not just like, oh, let's just, you know, standard operating procedure. Let's dump all the metals and paints in the lake and see what happens. Glad we live now.
Thank you. Drew Heel, please.
Thank you. Environmental sustainability is absolutely important. Not only do I talk it, but I walk it. I have solar panels on my home. So I truly, truly believe at the expense of saving our environment. There are things that you can do. There are tax credits that Excel Energy will give homeowners. Do the residents of Mound, are they aware of that? Do we have that on our city page? There are residents, there are, I know, because I use those tax credits to help me fund the solar panels on my roof, so I know. Recycling, Nicole mentioned recycling. I think we've got a solid recycling program. I think there's things we could do to improve that also. Green space is also important. Do we have, I think we do have a little bit of a city garden outside near, near one of the churches there, we could utilize that. But there are tax credits we could implement to city. Those need to be implemented to the city, provided to the residents of the city of Mound so they know they're available. So it's education.
Thank you. Deb Vertnick.
I absolutely believe that the city has a responsibility to keep our environment clean for those of us who live here. Drink water, breathe air, swim in lake and everything else. Nicole is right. Climate change is real, whether you like it or not. It is, it is real, it is science based. And we need to look at the science and see what the city can do as far as restrictions or, or mandates or whatever need to be done for places that are making it so that our lake isn't as clean as it should be and our air is not as, as, as clean as it should be. Hopefully, those people and businesses will take it upon themselves and mandates are, wouldn't be necessary. History shows us that's not the case, unfortunately. But maybe in this day and age, people are waking up a little bit and take, we all take a little bit of responsibility for ourselves, then we can, we can try to slow this problem down and take care of it. But the city absolutely does have a responsibility in that as well.
Thank you. And our next question. How can Mound partner with surrounding cities to improve and share services? And here we will start with Deb Vertnick and to be followed by Nicole Spees.
Well, I know we already partnered with Orno for our police services and I am not so sure that was the best idea. I think it's important for, for that particular sharing of services that, I think it's important for us to have our own police department. I've heard other residents say the same thing. I don't know if it was a cost issue. I don't know why that, why the Mound Police Department went away. But, and, and maybe it's a good thing. Again, more questions and answers for me. But I, to me, it seems like in that particular instance that it's more important for us to, Orno police don't care about people that live in Mound. They just come in here, they collect their monthly money and that's it. We need to develop a relationship. And the police need to develop a relationship that helps keep crime down. It's, it's simple that way. There's probably other things that we can do. I see my time is short, so I guess I talked too long about the police.
Thank you. And now Nicole Spees.
Um, we do partner with the Orno Police Department and that seemed to be a pretty good move for the simple fact that we, I think, used to have two cars in the overnights and now we have an actual police presence. So we also partner with Minatrista and I, I don't have the exact numbers. I know one of them fell off. I think it was Minnetonka Beach. But we partner with the fire department for some different activities and such. And we've got some contracts that are set to expire. And I don't know if they're ironclad, but I think some things might want to be changed. I think it's a great idea to partner with other cities, especially since we're in such close proximity. I mean, if you've ever driven through Excelsior or on Seven, you pass 18 different towns in about a two minute section. So it is important to keep our relationships with our neighbors on the up and up. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Heel, please.
Thank you. We, we currently do partner with several of our surrounding cities and I do think that's important for several reasons. One is you share ideas. You share best practices between each of the common communities. Because to Nicole and Deb's point of view, we are a very close knit community. And let me give you an example. We recently purchased a fire engine truck for $615,000. Initially, you think, well, that's a, that's a large amount. But about 40 to 45% is going to be traded with other, other levels of community. So we're only going to be paying about 55% of it. Those are the things that we're such a small community. Well, our budget is $5 million, a little over $5 million a year. So those are the things that benefit everybody. And that behooves us as the city of Mound to work with our local neighbors for best practices, training, we do multiple training events. I support the Orno police, the combined Orno police and the Mound working together. I think that's very, very important. And it's just a good sense of community when you can work with your fellow, fellow residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And that kind of leads us into our next question. What steps do you believe the city council can do to work with the police department in addressing police funding and training to better serve Mound's communities? And here we'll start with Drew Heel, followed by Deb Vertnick.
Thank you. Again, I think I might go back to what I originally stated. When you train with different communities, you will begin to adopt best practices amongst those three or four communities. And as that, you become a better city. So I would encourage cooperative training, cooperative conferencing together, where we have virtual cities get together. Maybe on a yearly basis, we rotate from different cities on who's going to train whom. Joint train facilities for both our police department and our fire department. If you, if you get a sense, I'm very big on training, but it has to be quality training that has an end result to it. Just not for training, for trains purposes. Those are the things I would probably.
Thank you. Deb Vertnick.
Well, right now, Mound doesn't have its own police department. So I guess, I, I think maybe we have some community officers here, which I think is a good idea if we don't actually have them. I know we have community officers up at the high school and, and such. I'm not sure where they come from is my, my question there. I don't know if they're part of that Orno contract or, or not. But regardless, I think we should have our own, Mound should have their own community type, I don't necessarily call it a police force because then it would be a police force, but just community service officers. And to combine a training with them, with Orno, so that everybody's kind of on the same page, but that we have that, our own small town, again, community give and take between the residents and, and law enforcement so that they can build a good community relationship with the people of the communities. We don't want to be scared of our police. They're here to protect and serve us.
Thank, thank you very much. And now Nicole's piece.
Um, with the police, everybody benefits when we have open communication. So to have this police force, you know, do a weekend training with that police force and the neighboring one, you know, on, on all sides of the lake, from Wayzata to the South Tonka Police Force to Orno to, you know, maybe we want to even get into some technical training things with some of the bigger cities around us. I know no one wants to mention Minneapolis Police, but let's face it, if something is happening, you want a police presence. And so I think that's important. And the way that we train these guys is very important. Let's take a walk in a police officer's shoes. I mean, these guys need to have as many resources as possible for training, therapy, and just to get stuff off their chest so they can move on with their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. Please describe a situation in which you have successfully reached a solution to a difficult challenge with those who started with opposing positions. What is your approach to working through situations with those who disagree? And here we will start with Nicole Spees, followed by Deb Vertnick.
Open communication and relax. Take a deep breath and just listening and figuring out where the other person is coming from. It's going to go a long way to building some bridges and kind of walking together and figuring out how you can do this. You don't necessarily have to like the person and you don't have to subscribe to everything that they tell you. But just understanding where somebody is coming from and where they're going sometimes offers a lot of clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deb Vertnick.
Well, time is short here, so I'm trying to think of a specific instance where that happened and nothing's coming to mind at the moment. I am married though. And so that happens all the time. And I guess, so I guess, yeah, you know, we have opposing views quite often. And I guess it's the same thing. Out in the world as it is in a marriage, you need to be respectful of one another and listen to what the other person has to say, kind of what Nicole was saying. Just have a respectful dialogue. Ask questions of each other. Try, put forth your position in a, in a concise and respectful way and listen to what the other person has to say. And sometimes it comes down to having to compromise. And compromise is not, doesn't mean that you've lost. Compromise to me is a win-win usually. Everybody gets a little bit of something. And I think that's how you handle problems is by listening and compromising.
Thank you. Drew Heel.
So as my role of Director of Program Management, I do this for a living. My job right now is intermediary between business and IT. So I represent both the business side and the IT side. And my job is to bring them together and develop. and develop programs and projects for the next several years for the company that I work for. Some examples are, you have to listen to people. You have to sit back and understand what their point of view and what is their hot button. Why are they taking this position that they're really taking? And if you understand that, you get a little bit, you get rid of the emotional aspect of it, and the second thing we always want to use is data. What is the data showing you? Because once you get to the data, you get rid of the emotional aspect of it, and people start saying, okay, we can't do this because it's going to raise taxes, or we can't do this because this is what's going to happen. Here are the pros and cons of that, and you present the data in an unbiased, neutral way, and then you say, look, this is, if we want to do this, this is the result. If you want to do this, this is the result.
Thank you. And now this will be our final question for the evening, and that question is, is there an issue that wasn't discussed in this forum that you would like to address? And we will start here with Nicole Spees, followed by Drew Heel.
Um, dare I go there with the chickens? I don't know. I will say this, though, with the, as many, um, social platforms that I've been seeing these little critters on, uh, I, I'm not opposed to it, but I do think we do need to have some legislation in, in place. And, you know, someone was saying that, um, three to five chickens per neighborhood. Well, is that four houses put together? Did you fence in the yard? Like, how does that work? And what does the chicken coop look like? We can't have an old alumna craft sitting up against a shed and be like, hey, that's it. You know, we, we have to put some legislation and, and make sure that we're very respectful to our neighbors if we are going to allow said birds in Mound. Chicken out.
Thank you. And now Drew Heel, please.
Thank you. Hmm, let me, I was trying to think of an answer here. One thing I think that's probably we need in the city of Mound is a dog park. We don't have a dog park, and a dog park is not mostly, it's not just for taking our four-legged friends and walking around at dog park. We have 36 parks. I have a problem understanding, why can't we use maybe one of those 36 parks for a dog park? We have some areas that are undeveloped. Eric, the city manager, and I've had a conversation about this, so that's one of the things I would push as a dog park. Again, it's not just taking your four-legged, four-legged friend there, it's a social way of meeting people. It's a way of interacting with your community. It brings you that small-town environment where you sit down and, you know, Deb and Nicole and Drew sit down and have a conversation in an unthreatening way. We talk about our dogs, and, and that's how you get to know people. That, that is the small-town environment that I think all of us like. And that's something I would really push for, something along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deb Vertnick, please.
Uh, one thing that hasn't been touched on here that people don't talk about in Mound, and I, and I know there is somewhat of an issue, I don't know how big of an issue it is, but because anyone is affected by it, it's an issue to me, and that is homelessness and hunger. In an affluent area such as ours, there is no excuse for anyone not to have a permanent roof over their head or to have a full belly every day. I know that this summer, uh, the school provided, um, lunches for kids, um, because sometimes that's the only meal that they get. I find it just astounding that any of this is going on in our town, but I think that it needs to be talked about, we need to find out more about it, and we need to take care of it so that not one person is roofless or hungry.
Thank you. And now I will call upon you for your closing statements, and we will start with Deb Vertnick, please.
Well, I think this was a really constructive, uh, forum here tonight. Got a lot of respect for my two opponents as well, and I think any one of us would be, uh, just a fine addition to the city council. For myself, I think that what I can offer the voters is their voice. That is, that's what I'm about. I'm about listening to people and trying to represent them and, and what they want in their community. My, I don't have as, as prominent of a educational background as, as my two opponents here, but I do have a desire and a willing, willingness to, to serve the community. And really, that's the only, uh, qualification necessary when it comes right down to it. So I hope that you, you know, will check into me a little bit more, see if you agree with, in my ideas of, you know, that I want to keep Mound small, I want to, to help small businesses, family-run businesses, people who have a dream of opening, uh, a whatever, uh, to be able to do that and for the city to, to be behind them once they do that, rather than putting up obstacles that cause them to fail, which I have heard has happened to some of the businesses in this town, and that's just not right. So I just want to be a voice for the people that want to be heard, and that's why I'm running, that's why I'm here. And if you agree with that, um, I hope you will give me a, uh, check me out a little bit more and, and, uh, support me with your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicole Spees, your closing statement.
Well, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Melissa, our moderator. Thank you so much. The residents of Mound, Drew and Deb, thank you so much for your viewpoints. It was very interesting to get to know you this evening. And Chris at LMCC for putting our, there for people to see, so I hope you'll all vote on November 3rd. Mound is an old city, and like an old house, there's, we've got some needed renovations and some areas that need cleaned up. Maintenance, like house cleaning, needs to be on the list. So if we get dirty now, make some sacrifices, then we can have a renovated gorgeous home in Mound. My plan is to keep up with infrastructure improvements while planning new and exciting ways to use our existing footprints. I want to see kids travel and experience new people and places and return home to appreciate our ideas and what Mound represents as we grow into the future. City maintenance costs are rising, and we don't want to sacrifice snow removal for higher property taxes. However, customers and patrons are taxpayers, so let's build some of those tax-generating success stories. We know how great it is out here, so let's get together and discuss how to invite people over. We are proud Mound residents, over 9,500 of us, so let's put our heads together and do some different than previous administrations to create growth. We need good leaders to carry us into the next generation, and I'm asking for you to vote Spees in November on Mound to keep family, to keep Mound family-friendly while taking it into the future. Thanks for your time, and you can check out my website at speesformound.com.
Thank you. And Drew Heel?
Thank you. Again, um, as Nicole mentioned, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event and the candidates who are currently running for both their time and effort this evening. I do truly believe this is an important venue. We've covered a wide variety of topics and important issues that will affect our community now and in the foreseeable future. What I bring to the council if elected is 20 years of business experience. During this time, I have dealt with many unique and different points of views, which have required me to stop, listen, and ask questions. This type of servant leadership experience provides myself the foundation to help lead, and with your help, the city of Mound. If elected, I will listen to you, the residents, to help guide and shape the future of this great, great city we have. Because in the end, I work for you, the residents of Mound. One final comment before I end. Has, have, has it been for those, one final comment I have for those watching this event, has your life improved during the past several years under the current council leadership? Are you happy with your utility rates? Have you seen improvements in the quality of the services the city has provided? Does the city council listen to your concerns and respond back in a timely manner? Do you feel that there's a right level of transparency between the community, yourself, and the Mound council members? And most importantly, is there the right level of citizen involvement? If not, I would ask for your vote on November 3rd, because if not now, when? Thank you for your time, and please be safe.
Thank you. And this concludes the Mound City Council Candidate Forum. Thank you to the candidates, the League of Women Voters, volunteers, and those viewing the event on cable and video for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you to the city of Mound for supporting this event, and to Lake Minnetoka Communications Commission, or LMCC, for recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at www.lmcc-tv.org or ORG, as well as the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram pages, and our website at www.lwvwa.org. Please remember to vote in the November 3rd general election, either by absentee ballot or in person. Your vote is your voice. The League of Women Voters welcomes new members, both women and men, and you can find more information at www.lwvwa.org. Thank you, and good night.